Good afternoon and welcome to the June 7th work session of the Portsmouth Planning Commission. Mr. Baldwin?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission. Good to see you all today. We will jump right in with our staff presentations on the items you will have before you enter your Planning Commission meeting today. So, our first item up is our Chesapeake Bay exception 22-03. Amy Mervine will give that presentation. We do seem to be in a bit of a run of Chesapeake Bay exceptions these days.
Good afternoon, Planning Commissioners. My name is Amy Mervine, Senior Planner with the City of Portsmouth. For this presentation, I'm going to do a brief explanation of why the applicant's proposal is before you today. So, this one is CBE-22-03, and Sam Artis is requesting a Chesapeake Bay exception for a 10-by-15 detached shed approximately 150 square feet within the 50-foot landward buffer at 70 Fox Grape Road. The property is zoned urban residential U R and is further described as Tax Map 437, Parcel 10. Back in the late 1980s, City Council adopted a Chesapeake Bay Preservation Area map which designates certain properties as located within the Resource Protection Area, or RPA. This slide provides a simple explanation of the RPA. The RPA is located immediately adjacent to water bodies with tidal influence. It is composed of any tidal wetlands, which can be vegetated or a mud flap, as well as a 100-foot buffer of land. The 100-foot buffer is composed of a 50-foot seaward and 50-foot landward component. As I've listed here on this slide, the Planning Commission's role is to review accessory structures in the entire 100-foot buffer and review principal dwelling and necessary utilities in the seaward 50-foot buffer. Today's request is for an accessory structure in the 50-foot landward buffer, which requires your review and approval. Under the circumstance of a denial by Planning Commission, an applicant may appeal their requests to the Circuit Court. This Chesapeake Bay exception application involves the property at 70 Fox Grape Road. The 1.0134-acre property is in the urban residential U R zoning district. The property contains a two-story, approximately 1,472-square-foot, single-family dwelling originally constructed in 1942. The property was platted prior to October 1st, 1989, and approximately 99% of the property is located within the RPA. Single-family residents are located directly to the east, to the south across Fox Grape Road, and to the west across an inlet of the Elizabeth River. The Elizabeth River is directly north of the property. The applicant is proposing a new detached shed adjoining the single-family residence to the west, and to remove the existing shed located at the rear of the property. The Chesapeake ordinance requires the approval of an exception to develop an accessory structure within the RPA. This is an overview of the survey that was submitted. On the next slide, here, I have zoomed in and I've highlighted in yellow the existing and proposed shed locations, and marked the 50-foot seaward buffered in blue and the 50-foot landward buffer in green for visibility purposes of this presentation. The proposed 10-by-15 detached shed, 150 square feet, is within the 50-foot landward RPA buffer. The proposed detached shed is not to encroach into the 50-foot seaward RPA buffer. The existing shed within the 50-foot seaward RPA buffer located at the rear of the property is proposed to be removed. The required planting unit consists of one canopy tree, two under-story trees, and three small shrubs or woody ground cover. The plants will be chosen from the plant list from the Virginia State Buffer Modification and Mitigation Manual. Staff recommends approval of the Chesapeake Bay exception with the recommended conditions listed in the staff report for the removal of the existing shed and proposed new shed at 70 Fox Grape Road. To my knowledge, no public comments were received regarding this application. I will now stand by for any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Mervine. Commissioners, are there any questions? Ms. Mervine? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman? I mean, Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I'm going to move you up to all positions.
Don't do that. These next two items are both part of the same proposed development, Z22-02 and UP22-09. So, we're going to have Julie Chopps going to present the staff information for the Planning Commission on both of those items for you.
Hi, everybody. Amy is taller than me. Okay. Good afternoon, Planning Commissioners. This is Julie Chopps, Principal Planner with the City of Portsmouth. This rezoning application is being considered concurrently with a use permit application to build a self-service storage facility. My presentation will focus on both applications. Approval of the use permit is contingent upon approval of the rezoning application. Each application will require a separate vote. Rezoning and use permit applications for a comparable request at 0 Effingham Street were previously denied by City Council on April 13th, 2021. City code requires 12 months from the date of denial before another application for substantially the same change may be filed. These applications were submitted subsequent to the required waiting period. The rezoning and use permit applications before you today involve a 5.38-acre parcel at 0 Effingham Street. The applicant is requesting a rezoning of the property from downtown D1-T5 to conditional general mixed use. A self-service storage facility use requires a use permit in the GMU zoning district. Therefore, the applicant is also requesting a use permit for the proposed use. The property is currently vacant and was formerly the site of the Washington Park Housing Development. Lead-contaminated soil was found on the site, and in 1990, the EPA declared the site a national superfund site. The property is in the AE flood zone and is also encumbered with several utility easements. The surrounding area is a mix of industrial, commercial, and residential uses. A large parking area for semi-trailers, Zone D1-SD, is located to the east of 0 Effingham Street. To the north of the subject property is vacant land and the stormwater facility for the trailer parking, zoned T5 and SD. To the south of the property is Portsmouth Fire Station Number One, which is zoned D1-T4. Further south are retail shops that are zoned GMUK. Our retail store with gasoline sales and residential dwellings are located to west of the property, and they are zoned D1-T4. and will not contain a residence. The office is estimated to operate from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., and the facility will provide access to the units 24 hours a day via a security access system. The proposed self-service storage facility will employ approximately six to eight people. The conceptual site plan shows two access points to the site, one off of Effingham Street and another at the southeast corner of the parcel from Green Street and Brighton Street. Loading areas are displayed on the east and south of the building. 21 parking spaces are planned along the eastern and southern building facades. In order to meet flood zone requirements, the facility will be elevated seven feet to the required level above the floodplain. If approved, the storage facility will be developed in compliance with the city's excavation requirements for ABEX superfund sites. The applicant submitted a proffer letter as part of the rezoning application that includes a list of prohibited land uses that would typically be permitted in the GMU zoning district that are either inappropriate for this property or restricted by the EPA covenants. Due to elevated levels of lead, residential and many types of commercial uses are prohibited on this parcel. The proposed proffers ensure that potentially high-risk activities are not conducted on the site while also protecting adjacent areas from inappropriate land uses. The voluntary proffers also mandate that the applicant remove the existing chain-link fence and install landscaping along the entire length of the property along Effingham Street. A note that the previous rezoning request for this parcel did not include voluntary This elevation shows the west facade facing Effingham Street. The proposed materials consist of textured stone veneer and non-reflective glazing in compliance with the use-specific standards for self-service storage facilities. This slide also shows the south elevation facing the fire station. The east elevation faces the trailer parking lot, and the north elevation faces the vacant lot and the interstate on-ramp. The proposed GMUK zoning eliminates the urban downtown requirements and allows for a more typical suburban-related form of development. A rezoning of this property to accommodate the proposed use is suitable as the superfund designation limits the development potential of the site. The proposed rezoning with the proffers and the proposed use permit with the recommended conditions would provide for the use of vacant property with restricted development potential in a manner that is appropriate for the property and compatible with the surrounding area. Staff recommends approval of both the proposed GMUK conditional rezoning and the proposed self-service storage facility use with the recommended conditions. No public comments have been received regarding these applications, to my knowledge, and this concludes my presentation. I will stand by for any questions from the Commissioners.
Thank you, Ms. Chop. Commissioners, are there any questions of Ms. Chop?
Julie, did you say you haven't heard anything from the Civic League or any of the neighbors?
Yeah, nothing.
Hi, good afternoon. Were the omission or the, I guess omission, of proffers the only change in the application from last time to this time that you recall? Basically?
Yes, that's the only change.
And is there going to be any outside storage, like for RVs or boats or anything on this proposed with this self-storage? Sometimes they do, you know, store outdoor RVs and vehicles. It didn't look like there was, like, a parking lot, but I didn't see where it was mentioned or not mentioned.
I don't believe so, but I would recommend asking the applicant.
Sure. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioners, any additional questions?
One more question. At the end of this, there's a note talking about the Navy-owned 20-feet of the sanitary line, I mean, yeah, sanitary sewage lines. What, how do you all usually deal with that when you have construction going on, but then you have a potential Navy project that could start at any particular time? How does that, how do you all usually work with that? Bob, whoever?
What happens in those cases, the project's coordinated with the Navy, the city staff, when it goes through site plan process, coordinates to make sure there's no negative impact on the Navy's facilities there.
So, what about the person that's trying to develop said property? In this particular case, where they're getting ready to construct?
Yeah, that's all done, that's all coordinated.
Commissioners, any additional questions? Thank you, Ms. Chop. You also have the next item?
Yes. Okay. I figured I would just stay up here. Okay, cool. All right. Good afternoon again, Planning Commissioners. This use permit application involves the property at 1 Lexington Drive. The Timmins Group requests a use permit for a 106-unit multifamily senior living apartment The approximately 7.3-acre property is in the multifamily urban residential URM zoning district and is currently vacant of structures. The property is the former location of a Portsmouth redevelopment and housing authority development called Lincoln Park that was built in 1960. Lincoln Park consisted of 178 dwelling units in 33 buildings and an activity center that was demolished in phases in 2019 to, in order to provide minimal disruption to the residents. Use permit UP-16-01 was approved in 2016 to redevelop the 178 multifamily apartment dwelling units. An amendment to the use permit was approved in 2017, UP17-11, which amended the approved use to 163-story townhouse-style dwelling units. Phase one of the development, renamed Lexington Place, was subdivided from the remainder of the parcel, and 72 townhouse-style apartments were constructed in April of 2021. The applicant now wishes to replace the UP-17-11 use permit approval with this request and redevelop the remaining area with one apartment building consisting of 106 units as phase two of this development. To the north of the property at 1 Lexington Drive is Dale Homes, a newly renovated residential property owned and maintained by PRHA consisting of 296 dwelling units, zoned multifamily urban residential. The Brighton neighborhood is located to the east of the site across Columbus Avenue and is largely a single-family dwellings zoned urban residential. Lexington Place Phase One, a multifamily development zoned URM, is located to the south of the property. To the west, between Graham Street and Frederick Boulevard, is a religious institution and residential property zoned URM. The proposed development includes 81 one-bedroom units and 19 two-bedroom units with a 33-foot-high, three-story U-shaped building. A private park is proposed to the north of the site. The conceptual site plan shows 159 off-street parking spaces, including seven handicap spaces. Site access is proposed from Lexington Drive with a private loop road to Columbus Avenue. A roundabout will be installed where Lexington Drive terminates at the private property in accordance with the recommended conditions. Elevations of the front facade facing south is shown here and includes a covered drive-up canopy. The west elevation is also shown on this slide, which faces Graham Street. This slide shows the east elevation facing Dale Homes and Columbus Drive, and the rear elevation to the north that opens up to a courtyard. Staff recommends approval of the use permit request with the recommending, recommended conditions for an up to 106-unit multifamily dwelling development at 1 Lexington Drive. The proposed multifamily development will provide needed senior living housing and is consistent with the recommendations of the city's Build One Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan. To my knowledge, no public comments have been received regarding this application, and I would be happy to stand by for any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Chop. Commissioners, are there any questions of Ms. Chop? Now, this may sound rather simplistic, but how many, define senior for me?
Well, I guess, I think that they mentioned 55 and up, but the, the actual use permit, it will not regulate who can occupy the units. That, so, they don't necessarily have to keep them senior living, but right now, that's what they've indicated they plan to do. So, I'm not sure of the specifics on how they'll determine a senior versus not a senior.
So, there's no requirement for them to be purely seniors?
Not in terms of the use permit. In terms of the use permit, this is just a multifamily dwelling development and, which requires a use permit, so.
Commissioners, are there any additional questions? Okay, thank you. Mr. Baldwin?
And that's all we have for you prior to the regular meeting.
Commissioners, are there any other questions or comments at this time? There being none, the work session is now concluded. We will begin our regular meeting at 1:30. Chop, thank you. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to welcome you all to this very important meeting today, Tuesday, June 7th, 2022, being held in the City Council chambers. Madam Secretary.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will now confirm that all members of the Planning Commission are present by calling the roll. Commissioners, when I call your name, please reply with a verbal response. Commissioner Williams?
Present.
Commissioner Thaxton?
Present.
Commissioner Coleman?
Here.
Commissioner Page?
Present.
Commissioner Barnes?
Here.
Commissioner Curry?
Present.
Commissioner Hines?
Present.
Seven members of the Planning Commission are present.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Commissioners, before you are the minutes of the May 3rd, 2022, public hearing, if there aren't any changes, we're in need of a motion to approve the minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion for the approval of the minutes.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
I second the motion.
Madam Secretary, we have a motion and a second.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, as I call your name, please reply with a verbal response. Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Thaxton?
Yes.
Commissioner Coleman?
Yes.
Commissioner Page?
Yes.
Commissioner Barnes?
Yes.
Commissioner Curry?
Yes.
Commissioner Hines?
Yes.
The minutes are approved by a vote of seven to zero. Announcements of future meetings and conferences. Our next scheduled work session is Tuesday, July 5th, 2022, at 12:30 p.m., City Council Chamber, followed by public hearing at 1:30 p.m., City Council Chamber. Items reviewed today will be presented to City Council for action at their July 12th, 2022, public hearing, or as otherwise noted. Planning Commission rules limit a speaker up to five minutes to speak. We also ask that everyone please silence your cell phone at this time if you have not already done so. Our first public hearing item, CBE-22-03, Century Homes. Sam Artis requests a Chesapeake Bay exception for a 10-by-15 detached shed approximately 150 square feet within the 50-foot landward buffer at 70 Fox Grape Road. The property is zoned urban residential U R and is further described as Tax Map 437, Parcel 10. The Build One Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan's future land use map recommends low-to-medium density, single-family residential development for the property. The staff coordinator, Ms. Amy Mervine, will the applicant or representative for this application please come forward and present your application at this time?
Good evening.
Good afternoon, sir. Sir, if you'll speak into the microphone.
Yes, can you hear me?
Sure, thank you.
All right. Yes, so, I have a 10-by-15 shed for lawn equipment, and I'm an electrician, and I need a storage for my electrical equipment and, and, and lawn equipment. That's basically what the shed going to be used for.
Commissioners, are there any questions of Mr. Artis? There is POB nine. Thank you, sir. Thank you. Madam Secretary.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on item CBE-22-03. I do have one registered speaker, Mr. Mark Yodalde Yotrowski. You will come forward. You have up to five minutes to speak.
Good afternoon, Chair, Commissioners, and other neighbors. Over the years, I have found that on Chesapeake Bay exceptions, when the staff recommends the exemption, the exception, I'm pretty well satisfied with their reasoning, and so it is in this case. I do want to make a comment for your ears, and unfortunately, you don't have a non-agenda portion of your meeting, so I'm going to insert it here. Please excuse the deviation. As, as one of the people you serve, I am very interested in your thinking when you deliberate on matters that come before you. And what I've found of late, not just here, but in other appointed and elected bodies, when people vote no on an item where there is a staff recommendation in favor of the item, I would really like to hear an explanation of your vote. I don't think the law requires it, because if it did, I'm sure that Mr. Baldwin would have prompted you for it, but as your constituent, I'm very interested in your thinking. And you are acting as advisor to City Council, which will be taking up many of the items that you deliberate on. So, I think it is helpful to them in terms of forming their opinions to know what your thinking is when you go against the grain. So, from me to you, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Madam Secretary.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on CBE-22-03. If there is someone here who did not get an opportunity to register and would like to address this application, you may come forward, state your name and your address, and you will be given up to five minutes to speak. Appearing to be none, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission, this public hearing is now closed.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Commissioners, are there any further discussions? There being none, the chair is in need of a motion for CBE-22-03 with conditions.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion for the approval of CBE-22-03.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Secretary.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Motion and second for approval of CBE-22-03. Commissioners, as I call your name, please reply with a verbal response. Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Thaxton?
Yes.
Commissioner Coleman?
Yes.
Commissioner Page?
Yes.
Commissioner Barnes?
Yes.
Commissioner Curry?
Yes.
Commissioner Hines?
Yes.
This item is approved by a vote of seven to zero. Our next item, Z-22-02 Downtown. Don Scott requests to rezone approximately 5.38 acres at 0 Effingham Street from downtown D1-T5 sub-district to conditional general mixed use, GMU-K, in order to develop a self-service storage facility. The applicant is concurrently requesting a use permit for the self-service storage facility used, used UP-22-09. The future land use map of the Build One Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan designates this property as mixed-use employment. The property is owned by the Portsmouth Redevelopment and Housing Authority, PRHA, and is further described as Tax Map 29, Parcel 9. Staff coordinator is Julie Chop. Will the applicant or the representative for this application please come forward and present your application at this time?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Thank you for having me. I'm Don Scott. I'm here on behalf of Safe Storage, Safe Store to request this permit. If you go through the slide, you'll see where the location is. It's right on Effingham, several views. This is a conceptual site plan. There you go. It would be, if you know where Effi, if you know where this is on Effingham, it's right between the fire station and 264. It has been vacant for now 29 years. It was the former site of Washington Park when Washington Park was, when all of the residents moved out in 93, and then 2006. and then 2006, it was demolished. Since 93, that property has been sitting vacant, not being used at all. If you pass by that as a fence-up, it's overgrown. If you know, it was a superfund site. And I will, I will go through some more of that as we go through this site, but I think you may have already gone through it, and I don't want to repeat myself. But this is the facility, it's a 103,000-square-foot facility. There will be no truck or car storage on this site. The, the site is, and you see there would be a storm, stormwater retention pond there. Next slide, please. And these were the proffers, I think we talked about it. The big difference before, now, and last time when we came forward, I was not involved with the project. We have made a proffer this time, basically saying a couple of things. One, we will give the city authority, not only EPA. EPA has a lot of authority, it was a superfund site, so the Environmental Protection Agency has authority to make sure it's safe. But we also gave the city the right to restrict the use to make sure that they, we comply with the safety requirements, along with EPA. Next slide. And as you can see, that's the elevation, it's facing Effingham. It's a three-story facility. It's the elevation facing the fire station at the other site. This site is a challenging site, as you know, because it was an EPA site, and we would have to make a significant investment, putting in backfill about seven feet because it's in a flood zone, and we also have to put piles in before we could build. So it's a significant investment for folks to come in. It has not a lot of different uses. As you can see, it's been, if it would, if it was able to be placed into the economy to earn revenue, it would have been, it's been 29 years vacant. Next slide, next slide. And, and that is the rendering of, of the, of the facility. One of the things that I wanted to bring to your attention, is Safe Store is a company that is under the collaboration of a, of another company that is focused on building communities out. We are committed to having a diverse workforce. We're committed to making sure that the folks who build this look like the community of Portsmouth. We're going to make sure that we hold them accountable on that, and I'm involved with the project because they made that commitment to me. If you look at the site history of that site, it was a Abex Railroad product site, with a foundry. Washington Park was built adjacent to it, had some lead issues, and was shut down and declared a super site, superfund site in 1990. In 93, all of the residents were, were moved, and it was shut down, and in 06, it was demolished. So the site, we're going to make sure that the site meets all of the requirements for the city. I'm sure Mr. Baldwin and others will make sure that we don't run afoul of the rules. There is a easement on the site, if the city talked to you about that. There's an easement on the site for stormwater. And that site, that, that easement is owned by the city. So even though the site itself is, is much larger, the usable land on the site is a lot smaller because of, because of the easement. And we want to do things in the city to reclaim difficult land, difficult locations. Obviously, it's a difficult site, it's been vacant all of this time. This is a way to put that site back into the economy and become, to earn some tax, much-needed tax revenue for the city. We are landlocked, we have a lot of government partners, the port, the Coast Guard, the shipyard, a lot of partners that we don't tax. This is a way to get some taxable benefit for the city. As you can see from the site, it'll, if you pass by there now, I think it can be, I'd ask you to go by if you have it, take a look at it. It's an eyesore. I think this facility will be aesthetically pleasing. It's quiet, it'll have an office feel. The architecture that we're putting in will make it kind of look like an office parking, even though we know it's a, a self-storage location. It'll have two ingress and egress sites, one on Effingham and one on the back, I believe it's Green Street. And basically, that's, that's, that's my presentation, and I'm here to offer any questions or any questions the staff may have.
Commissioners, thank you, Delegate Scott. Commissioners, are there any additional questions? There being none, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on item Z-22-02. I have one registered speaker, Mr. Mark Yodalde Yotrowski. You have five minutes, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, Commissioners and other neighbors, I'm going to combine my remarks for this item and the next. Don't have all that much to say about it, except that I believe the last time this item came before you for action, those of you who were on the Planning Commission made the right decision, and council erred in not affirming your decision. So I hope you won't have any hesitation about reaffirming your earlier decision because of council's action. Vacant property does not serve our best interests as a community. And the complexity of the environmental issues related to this piece of property impose severe limits on what can be there. So in accordance with guidance from the Environmental Protection Agency, the applicant has brought forth something that fits within those restrictions. I think it will be a good use. I think that the EPA regulations will limit any potential danger to the nearby neighborhood, which is, it's not that nearby, but it, it is a factor in terms of your overall consideration. So I would urge you to approve this application and the, the use permit application. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Madam Secretary?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I have Robert Barclay and James Burt that are here, if you have any questions.
We're only here, does, if there's any, any questions you have? Do you have any questions? Also, I just wanted to add that last night, we did meet Brighton Prentice Civic Leagues, and they, 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 I was like, suppose, talking.
Thanks, glad to know that. Commissioners, were there any additional questions that you had, if anyone? Thank you, sir. Madam Secretary?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on item UP-22-03. If there's anyone here who did not get an opportunity to register and would like to address this application, you may come forward, state your name and your address for the record, and you will be given up to five minutes to speak. Appearing to be none, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission, this public hearing is now closed.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Commissioners, we will now take both of these items in two separate votes. The initial item we need a motion and a second on is Z-22-0-
We can, if you had to open up a public hearing, secondly, on the next one. So we're going to vote now.
Okay. Well, the secretary has told me that I was wrong. Okay? That's why she sits next to me. So, we will now take up, I need a motion and a second for Z-22-02 with proffers.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion for the approval of Z-22-02.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, Madam Secretary?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have a motion and a second to approve Z-22-02. Commissioners, as I call your name, please reply with a verbal response. Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Thaxton?
Yes.
Commissioner Coleman?
Yes.
Commissioner Page?
Yes.
Commissioner Barnes?
Yes.
Commissioner Curry?
Yes.
Commissioner Hines?
Yes.
This item is approved by a vote of seven to zero. Our next item is UP-22-09 Downtown. Don Scott requests a use permit for a three-story, 103,350-square-foot self-service storage facility with 793 units on the approximately 5.38-acre property at Zero Effingham Street. The property is currently zoned downtown D1 in the T5 sub-district. The applicant is concurrently requesting a rezoning of the property to conditional general mixed-use GMU-K zoning district Z-22-02. The future land use map of the Build 1 Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan designates this property as mixed-use employment. The property is owned by the Portsmouth Redevelopment and Housing Authority, PRHA, and is further described as Tax Map 29, Parcel 9. Will the applicant or representative, please come forward and state your application at this time.
I would be using the same words that I just used, so I don't want to take the commission's time, but I will add this. A Madam Clerk mentioned that PRHA owns this property. I spoke with Mr. Bland, who is the director for PRHA. As a matter of fact, I've spoken with him several times, but I spoke to him as latest today. He gave me permission to represent to you that he fully supports this project. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Delegate Scott?
I had a question, I'm sorry. I didn't get you before you left. Thank you. The, the storage unit that, that is before us, is it climate-controlled?
I'm, I'm, I believe it will be, but I want to double check. With the engineer, this is the engineer. He's up here today from Athens, Georgia. Make sure he was his. Because I, I'm not engineer, I went to law school because I was told there would be no math. The answer is yes.
Yes, okay. Just, just a question, a scenario, I guess. With it being climate-controlled and with there being no employees or there, what, is there any, is there any efforts that are made for security during the evening? Is that?
There, there are employees there during business hours. And also is monitored both for temperature and for, it has cameras on all entrances and exits of the building. The building itself is a security complex, all the doors. There's no ex, there's very limited access into the building.
So it's, it's card-only access?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, okay, okay, thank you.
Sir, sir, could you give us your name for our records?
Yes, sir. James Burt, B-U-R-T-T.
Thank you, sir. Commissioners, are there any additional questions?
Thank, thank you.
Madam Secretary?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on item UP-22-09. If there's someone here who did not get an opportunity to register and would like to address this application, you may come forward, state your name and your address for the record, and you will be given up to five minutes to speak. Appearing to be none, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission, this public hearing is now closed.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. And I just must ask, can I do it now?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioners, the Chair is in need of a motion for UP-22-09 with conditions.
I'd like to make a motion to approve UP-22-09 with conditions.
Is there a second?
Second.
Madam Secretary, we have a motion and a second.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have a motion and a second to approve UP-22-09. Commissioners, as I call your name, please reply with a verbal response. Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Thaxton?
Yes.
Commissioner Coleman?
Yes.
Commissioner Page?
Yes.
Commissioner Barnes?
Yes.
Commissioner Curry?
Yes.
Commissioner Hines?
Yes.
This item is approved by a vote of seven to zero with conditions. Our last item, UP-22-10, Lincoln Park. Timmons Group requests a use permit for a 106-unit multifamily dwelling development on approximately 7.3 acres of land at a density of 14.5 dwelling units per acre. The property is located at 1 Lexington Drive and is in the multifamily urban residential URM zoning district. The future land use map of the Build 1 Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan designates this property as multifamily residential. The property is owned by the Portsmouth Redevelopment and Housing Authority, PRHA, and is identified as Tax Map 145, Parcel 1. The applicant is at the podium now. You may present your case at this time.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm sorry, I was a little eager, I came a little early.
Yes.
I apologize. My name is Philip Page. I'm the Director of Development for Portsmouth Redevelopment and Housing Authority. Along with me are other members of the development team, it's Glenn Hudson with TRG Community Development. And after me, you'll be hearing from Jack Bloom with Timmons Group to give the majority of the presentation and, of course, answer any questions that you might have. I just wanted to mention two things briefly. One is that this is part of what I would call a five-year redevelopment plan. About five years ago, Portsmouth Redevelopment Housing Authority initiated the redevelopment by demolishing the Lincoln Park Public Housing Project. We have since cleared the site and built back 72 townhomes in Phase 1 of the project. What we would like to do with this use permit is build back 106 units, which would bring us back to 178 units to not overbuild the site from what was there previously. And we want to do it in a little bit different configuration than we originally planned several years ago. And so we're really looking forward to the project. The second thing I just wanted to mention is that we did do what I think is a good deal of community engagement throughout the process, and that's working with, of course, our residents, the Resident Council, our Resident Advisory Board. We did reach out to the two adjacent civic leagues, the Brighton Prentice Place Civic League and the Historic Truxton Civic League, to direct them to the, excuse me, community meeting that we held on May 31st. We did get some general support for, actually, a pretty good support for this development and for the replacement with good-quality housing, which we believe Portsmouth needs more of, particularly on our sites. And in addition to that, there were some just concerns and recommendations regarding the site, which, of course, we've implemented into the development. And so with that, I'll just pass on to Mr. Jack Bloom to talk more about the use permit.
Good afternoon, Chairman, Commissioners. My name is Jack Bloom. I'm here to present for the required use permit for Lincoln Park Phase 2 multifamily development. The purpose of this permit request is for a three-story, 106-unit multifamily apartment development located at 1 Lexington Drive. A use permit is required for multifamily development zoned URM for the City of Portsmouth Code of Ordinance Use Table 40.2-216. Previous use permit, UP-1711, was granted for this parcel by City Council. We respectfully request that this use permit, UP-22-10, replaces use permit, UP-1711, by City Council Resolution. The 7.31-acre site is located at 1 Lexington Drive, and it's currently zoned URM. A modification to the existing use permit is required for the proposed 106-unit apartment building. The site has been recently cleared, but the pre-existing conditions include 104 dwelling units, including six, 17 sixplexes and one duplex. The pre-existing site was accessed from Lexington Drive, which has since been closed, vacated, and demolished. The proposed development should be accessed from the remaining Lexington Drive with a private loop road connecting to Columbus Avenue. The existing site borders residential development consisting of duplexes to the north, zoned URM, to the east borders Columbus Avenue. The opposite side of Columbus Avenue is zoned UR. To the west, this site is bound by Graham Street. The opposite side of Graham Street consists of single-family homes, zoned URM. The parcel is bound to the south by the parcels owned by the Portsmouth Redevelopment and Housing Authority, zoned URM. For these slides, these were taken at the end of the cul-de-sac at Lexington Drive. The slide to the left is facing north. This, the pre-existing development has been since cleared, so it's an open field at this moment. You can see some large deciduous trees. We're going to try to save as many of those as possible during the development process. This is looking south, back towards Phase 1, and west. The proposed 106-unit apartment development will have a density of approximately 14.51 units per acre. The building will consist of one-bedroom and two-bedroom units. The site shall provide 159 vehicle parking spaces to include seven handicap spaces. Long-term, long-term and short-term bicycle parking shall be provided as well as, as well per the city requirements. The layout of the building allows for a courtyard interior- The layout of the building allows for a courtyard interior to the building's three exterior walls and private active open space to the north. Landscaping should be provided to meet parking, building foundation, and green space requirements. All exterior trash and closures shall be screened by walls and landscaping. The existing public right-of-way of Lexington Drive shall be extended to provide a turnaround for emergency vehicles, um, and the fire department. As Philip said, we did have a, uh, local residents come on-site, uh, May 31st to express their concerns. From that meeting, the main concern was safety for this parcel, and, uh, from that, we recommend the, um, security cameras, fencing, and a well-lit site. Uh, as the site was previously developed, it is located in close proximity to public water and sewer. The current site has access to an eight-inch water main and eight-inch sanitary gravity main in Graham Street. The stormwater generated from the site should be managed for the state and city regulations and our DEQ Criteria 2B. The 2B regulations require the post-development stormwater runoff and pollutants to be reduced by 20% for the one-year storm. The runoff from a 10-year and 100-year storm event should not be greater than the previously developed site. The post-development runoff rates for the 110 and 100-year storm should be discharged to the existing storm serving, serving the site after attenuation through an onsite facility. The proposed apartments will have a reduction in traffic volume from the previous use of the site. The previous use consisted of 104 low-rise units, while this project proposes 106 mid-rise units. The daily trips from the previous site to the proposed site are reduced from 685 to approximately 577, with the peak hour reducing from 58 to 47 trips. These are calculated using ITE 10th Edition. Then with that, these are the elevations of the building. Using a hardy plank, a brick, um, asphalt shingles. I know that was a mouthful, but any, uh, questions, I'll be glad to field.
Commissioners, are there any questions?
Um, I have a, a few questions. Is this income restricted base?
Yes.
And so this is geared towards senior citizens, am I correct?
It is for, it, we're going after HUD funding and they require-
I can hear you.
Sorry, we're going after HUD funding, which requires, uh, minimum age 55.
And so what happens if that, that's not, you don't, that requirement doesn't have, you don't get filled, halfway filled with the requirement, what are you looking for, 55?
If we don't use HUD funding?
Yeah, what happens if you don't get it, or you're not able to get that with the minimum age of 55?
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, if, if we run out of demand, which of course we don't believe that we will, then there are provisions to, um, change that. Um, market the property to seniors, and then after we've marketed it, it to seniors for a sufficient period of time, uh, then kinda change that designation. Um, but if I could add, um, we actually have, um, several, it's 150 people on our waiting list alone, uh, and we did look at waiting lists, uh, for other, um, senior housing in Portsmouth, and there are about 253 or so, um, people on the waiting list, not housed, but on the waiting list. So we do feel strongly that there's a good base of seniors to be able to be housed.
So you, you did say that one of the safety things you would have will be, um, a well-lit area, uh, which we understand the city of Portsmouth has crime is in broad daylight, so lights doesn't stop crime. Is there anything that, uh, Public Housing Authority have in place for the safety of these citizen, senior citizens in our city?
Yeah, I think, and I obviously don't have to, to tell anyone here that that's gonna be an ongoing challenge. I mean, uh, safety and security is a challenge at Hampton Roads, it's certainly a, a challenge in the city of Portsmouth, and in this particular, um, you know, community, it's been a challenge. Uh, and so, uh, I'm not sure all of what's, you know, um, listed in the application, but things that PRHA has done with the city, uh, include, we, we basically hired, you know, uh, an additional security staff to do, uh, ongoing patrols, uh, we've worked with the, the city for, uh, cameras, uh, we continue to add, uh, cameras and kind of, you know, target them and change them to make sure that we're, uh, capturing, of course, the hotspots. Um, the lighting certainly is a great component. You're right that, unfortunately, there are some that aren't afraid of the light, uh, but the lighting, I think, is a key component for that. Uh, in addition to that, um, the building, uh, itself will be protected and secured, uh, and access would be controlled there. Uh, and so, we're doing those things as the challenges continue, and we'll continue to do more things, um, to fight that, but we are aware of, of that security challenge, so.
Chair, do you have a question?
I did, but he pretty much answered.
Oh, okay. So, so let me ask you one last question, maybe the last question. So are you managing this? Who's managing this facility?
Uh, in our, in the properties that we've developed, PRHA, um, has management on staff. We do reserve the right, um, to bring in, uh, you know, other management. Uh, they would have to be vetted by the state, by us, uh, in order to make sure that they're qualified, so there could be at a later date, different management.
But currently, you, you, you'll be managing it?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Are there any additional questions?
I, I do, if you don't mind, could we go back to the building being secure? What, what do you mean by that? Are they gonna use FOBs or?
Yeah, the key FOBs is why you mentioned that, but yeah, we would do that. Um, going way back, the, the original plan was more for the townhomes throughout, um, the site, which of course would have taken up more of the site. Um, moving the units into a single building and, and going vertical, um, just allows us to kind of, you know, contain, um, you know, the, the use, contain the residence, and it does allow what you said, um, the key card access to just control that, um, and then leaves more open space outside, so we can control entrances and exits into the building, yes.
I have one. So as far as the key control access, what about when, like, ambulance or police need to get in? How, will they have easy access to getting in and out?
Um, i- in other places, there, the, uh, ambulance or emergency workers have their own access to be able to get in, so that they're obviously not hindered or obstructed, um, you know, with that.
Are there any additional questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Madam Secretary?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on item UP-22-10. If there's anyone here who did not get an opportunity to register and would like to address this application, you may come forward, state your name and your address for the record, and you will be given up to five minutes to speak. Appearing to be none, Mr. Chairman, members of the planning commission, this public hearing is now closed.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Commissioners, are there any additional questions or comments?
It was stated that it, it was 150 senior citizens awaiting for housing. Was this for this particular housing or for housing overall during the city of Portsmouth?
Actually, I think the number went up to 200 or something, when you did the whole study, 250.
I'm sorry, the Portsmouth Redevelopment Housing Authority has another, well, only one senior development, that's our Phoebe Square apartment. There's 150 unit, 150 families, excuse me, um, 150 seniors that are on the waiting list for that. Um, in addition to that, we did a, a study of other housing, senior housing in the city of Portsmouth, and that's where we got the 250 number. So it actually was a little bit more than 250 in total of people on a waiting list, uh, for senior housing in the city of Portsmouth. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. Madam Secretary?
Okay. Waiting for a motion, the public hearing is closed.
It's been one of those days. Commissioners, the chair's in need of a motion for UP-22-10 with conditions.
I recommend approval, um, for UP-22-10 with conditions.
Is there a second?
Second.
Madam Secretary, we have a motion and a second.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Motion and second to approve UP-22-10 with conditions. Commissioners, as I call your name, please reply with a verbal response. Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Thaxton?
Yes.
Commissioner Coleman?
Yes.
Commissioner Page?
Yes.
Commissioner Barnes?
Yes.
Commissioner Curry?
Yes.
Commissioner Hines?
Yes.
This item is approved by a vote of seven to zero.
Madam Secretary, I believe that concludes our agenda for today, is that correct?
That is correct.
Commissioners, is there any further business we need to discuss? Mr. Baldwin, do you have any further business for us?
No, sir.
There being none, this meeting is now adjourned.